It's five P M. On May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, we're going to call to order the committee on the whole agenda meeting. First up, we have appearance on our appearances, we have Andrew Rice with Bergen K D B on the two thousand and twenty-one audit. Well, thank you very much for having me here tonight. All right, so we do have a presentation for you tonight to go over the audit report for the year end of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And first, just wanted to cover our role as your auditor and the role of the city. It's our job as your auditor to come in, test, examine, look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements, and ultimately give an opinion as to whether those financial statements present accurately in all material respects. It is management's responsibility to prepare the financial statements. And when it comes to that opinion that we're giving on the financial statements, it's a clean or an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can give as your auditor. And again, that means this is a true and accurate presentation of the financial position of the city at the end of the year in all material respects. We also issue our report on government auditing standards. This report has us take a look at internal control over financial reporting, and we are required to disclose any deficiencies in internal control that rise to a significant deficiency or material weakness level. And we had two findings this year, one being the lack of segregation of accounting duties. And that relates to whenever there's any overlap in certain accounting functions within this city, or there's access to perform multiple accounting functions, that acknowledges that that deficiency in internal control could cause an error in your financial statements, and it's something that the council just needs to continuously be aware of, as that's a finding that you've received in the past, and just needs to be monitored for any changes in personnel. And that finding is common for cities of this size. The other finding that we have to report is the ratio of gallons billed to gallons pumped. So that is at sixty-five percent currently. The Water Works Association does acknowledge a benchmark of about ninety percent, and so that is also a finding that's been received in the past, and that the city continues to work towards improving that ratio. Also, part of the government auditing standards report is a compliance section, so we're also required to report any compliance-related matters that come to our attention as part of our audit procedures, and there were no compliance items to report here for two thousand and twenty-one. Next, also wanted to go over the Minnesota legal compliance report. The Office of the State Auditor has us take a look at certain legal provisions, and has us supporting noncompliance that comes to our attention as part of our audit procedures. And that includes deposits and investments, your contracts and bidding, claims and disbursements, other miscellaneous provisions, and we had no findings to report on Minnesota legal compliance. The other report that we issue is our communications letter. This includes some required communications in accordance with audit standards. It also includes some trend analysis that we provide. And it starts with taking a look at the general fund operations here for the year. And when we take a look at general fund operations here in two thousand and twenty-one, total revenues for the year were at four point seven million dollars. Expenditures were at three point eight million dollars, and then there were also some transfers out to other funds, and as a result, in two thousand and twenty-one, there was a decrease in fund balance of about eighty-six thousand dollars. The city does have a fund balance policy in place to maintain between forty and fifty percent as a minimum fund balance amount at the end of the year. And at the end of the year, here in two thousand and twenty-one, fund balance represented fifty-two percent, or about six months worth of expenditures at two thousand and twenty-one level, so the city is in compliance with that policy. Next, wanted to take a look at general fund revenues here over the last five years. And in two thousand and twenty-one, there was an increase in general fund revenues of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, or three percent. And the main driver for that increase was in property tax revenue, which increased about eighty thousand dollars with an increase in the levy. And the other revenue sources were fairly consistent with the prior year. Intergovernmental revenue continues to make up the majority of the general fund revenues, making up about fifty-three percent, with the largest component being local government aid or L G A, followed by property taxes that represents about forty-one percent of total revenues. Next, we'll take a, whoops, there was one slide ahead there. Next, we'll take a look at general fund expenditures here for the last five years. The expenditures here in two thousand and twenty-one increased about four and a half percent, or a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Looking at the different functions of government here in the general fund, public safety increased about fifty-two thousand dollars due to some additional hours worked, helping with frequent fires, also some purchases of gear and equipment. The miscellaneous category increased about forty-four thousand dollars due to negotiations of personal matters. Other categories remained fairly consistent in the prior year. The next slide shows the budget to actual results, and this would be a great way to take a look at city council's responsibility as it relates to the financial statements, and that's adapting and monitoring the budget. And the budget called for four point eight million dollars in revenues, and if you're following along with the communications letter on page twelve, but called for four point eight million dollars in revenue, three point nine million dollars in expenditures, acknowledged net transfers out to other funds of about nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and the anticipation for the year was a decrease in fund balance by forty-one thousand dollars. Now, when we take a look at the revenue side, in total, a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars less than anticipated in total, and the driver there was taxes and special assessments coming in under budget by about three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. And that's due to some of the components of the property tax budget being received through certain agencies, and those are coming through on the intergovernmental revenue side at about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar variance there. In total, on the expenditure side, came in under budget by about eighty-eight thousand dollars, and other financing sources and uses were under budget by about twenty-one thousand dollars. That resulted in a decrease in fund balance for the year of about eighty-six thousand dollars, or about forty-five thousand dollars more variances. Next, we'll take a.
Excuse me, what happens is when your remote triggers this one, that's actually doing that separately, so.
Okay, sounds good. I'll try to double check here. So next, we're on to the water fund. This begins the review of the enterprise activity of the city. And these funds should be operating like a business. Operating revenues should be covering operating expenses, and can be an indication as to whether rates need to change, or depending on future capital needs, you know, how to monitor that here going forward. But taking a look at the water fund this year, operating revenues were about at one point three million dollars, an increase over one point one million dollars in the prior year due to an increase in usage and customers. The operating expenses increased from one million two hundred and seventy-six thousand up to one million three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, and that generated an operating loss for the year of about fifty thousand dollars. Now, this number includes depreciation expense, and that expense is a noncash operating expense. So to give you an idea of the cash flow of this fund, we do also provide that information excluding depreciation, and that came in at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars surplus for the year. As a result, the unrestricted net position, which is the equity position in this fund that can be used for future operations and future capital needs, increased from a negative four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars to a negative three hundred and forty thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-one, so moving in the right direction when it comes to the unrestricted net position.
I think you have the highest level explanation of what depreciation is.
Sure. So as you have capital assets, or certain capital needs within the city, those are used over a number of years. So in order to accurately present the cost for the yearly use of that asset, we expense that through a depreciation expense amount. So even though you've spent those dollars in years past, we're acknowledging that that's being used over each period and recognizing the expense accordingly.
So if I could, if I'm an average community member, I sort of see it as, at some point we're going to have to buy new, we're going to have to invest new, and so we're taking that valuation over time and saying, we need to squirrel away this expenditure, because at some point, we're actually really going to need to replace things.
Correct. Yep. All right. Next, we'll move on to the sewer fund. The sewer fund had relatively consistent operating revenues ending the year in two thousand and twenty-one at just under one point four million dollars. Operating expenses decreased this year, going from one point five million dollars to one point four million dollars here in two thousand and twenty-one, and that resulted in the operating loss for the year of about fifty-five thousand dollars. And again, looking at the operations excluding depreciation expense, positive operations of about three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars here. Now, the unrestricted net position in this fund decreased from three point six million dollars down to a one point six million dollars. And this is a good way to kind of illustrate that those resources were spent on capital assets. And so now, we're going to be able to see that depreciation expense probably increase in future years to acknowledge the use of those assets in future years. Next is the electric fund. The electric fund had a gross profit this year of about one point nine million dollars, operating expenses at just over one point one million dollars, and a surplus for the year of about seven hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars without depreciation at about eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That left the unrestricted net position at nine million dollars that can be used for future capital needs in the electric fund. Next is the gas fund. The gas fund had a gross profit and operating revenues of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a significant decrease, as you can see from the prior years, and obviously, there are some issues in terms of the polar vortex and some of that, you know, impact on this fund, so that's the reason of the big decrease that you're seeing there. Fairly consistent operating expenses and an operating loss for the year of two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. And the hope is that, you know, that was a one-time thing, and we kind of think, see things normalize there in future years, but ultimately caused that decrease in unrestricted net position that you're seeing there, going from two point five million dollars to just over two million dollars, or just under one, two point one million dollars here in two thousand and twenty-one. The liquor fund did see an increase in gross profits this year, going from seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for the year, with an increase in activity in this fund and liquor sales. Operating expenses also increased from four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars up to five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars, and generated an operating income for the year of three hundred and three thousand dollars, which is the largest in the five years presented. With current operations, the unrestricted net position in this fund increased to one point six million dollars. Next, the campground fund. This fund, you know, with the expansion and the pandemic, having a positive impact in terms of the campground operations, we are seeing a five-year high here in two thousand and twenty-one, and eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in gross profit and operating revenues. Also, operating expenses actually decreased this year, going to three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and had an operating income of five hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That increased the unrestricted net position in this fund to five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars at the end of the year. Last, we'll take a look at the golf fund. And this is a fun, fun to take a look at, at least the trend analysis piece of it, as we're seeing the fund balance in this fund finally over the, over the hump in terms of being in a negative position here the past four years. So this one had operating revenues of four hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, operating expenses at five hundred and six thousand dollars. It did need transfers in of about four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, but did end of the year positive at twenty-four thousand dollars in fund balance at the end of the year. That is a high-level review of the financials, our financial statement audit and our analysis, and just like to open it up for any questions.
So none of this, we don't have any of our A R P funds because we hadn't received them yet, is that right? So there's nothing?
There were some that were received, but in terms of the accounting practices associated with that, we don't recognize any revenue until they're spent. So once those are spent, the revenue will be recognized at that.
Because we ask, I forget, do we have to ask for reimbursement, or do they give us some money upfront?
They give you two different payments. So half of it, yeah, half of it was received in two thousand and twenty-one, and the remainder will be received in two thousand and twenty-two.
I'm remembering. Can I just take a comment?
Sure.
Miranda and her team, I just want to say thank you for all the hard work in the midst of doing everything else for the city at the same time. You also have had a few years as our city finance director, and grateful for Bergen K D B for providing some flexibility and support while we were working through a lot of the work here at the city, and just really grateful to see the consistency and work that's being done here at the city. And I hope that when people take a look at this, they can see that the efforts of the council, the work that we do together to create a sustainable budget, has been something that we've seen for several years now, so I just want to say really appreciative and very much appreciative of the work and the teamwork. This is all about making sure people feel comfortable and aware of what we're doing. And you can see we're spending more, which is good, because we're investing more in the community, but just being mindful of all those things. So thanks for the good advice and recommendation you give us, and just a very special thank you to Miranda and Patty and the entire office team who worked to get this done, so I appreciate it.
Any other questions? I'd just like to echo that as well. The audit can be a grueling process, and then thank Miranda and the team for putting up with us for a week plus and answering all of our questions. It's very much appreciated. And I think Matt Mayer has been up here in the past, and he heard that I was coming up here tonight, and he was jealous. And he wanted to be the pass-on hello to everybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we want to move on to administrative updates. Our administrative alternate, we have an emergency. Just move on to attorney updates. So last, Miranda, did you have something that you wanted to add?
I guess there's just a couple of things on here that were from Joel, you know, and so I don't know if there's any discussion that wanted to be on there. Oh, is Joel on here? Oh, there he is.
Hi, Joel, sorry, I apologize, I didn't see him.
Hold on. Sorry. She should be able to hear him. She should be able to hear him. Sorry. He should be there. I don't see anybody else audio on. Just Joel.
I'm sorry, Joel, I'm having trouble hearing. Some sort of an audio thing. Joel, I think we're going to move on, and if you can get your audio back.
Yeah, I don't know what that was.
Attorney updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you can see from your packet, there was a second recall petition submitted to the city that was reviewed by the interim administrator and clerk. That has been certified, my understanding, based upon what I've read. We were also served with a second, a call-out second lawsuit, but purely a continuation of the first lawsuit. It's an amended petition to challenge the recall document. And again, the main defendants are the City of Two Harbors, Fatty and our senior clerk, the Two Harbor City Council, and Joel, I and our junior administrator, and the members of the recall committee. I can report to the council that this will be coming up again before a district court judge from Duluth. I would anticipate possibly by the end of the week, maybe sometime next week. There is an action item, or the council took action on today, which is to putting that on for the recall. Talk about the repercussions of that when we hit the that. I think I'll save my conversation purposes for that part of the agenda. But that's just a short summation of whoever.
City clerk and H R updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I wanted to point out to the council that we have a revised agenda, and you can find them all on your desks. We added a couple of appearances that called the end today. Also, I mentioned that I would be bringing forth some names for temporary employees, and I realize I don't have them with me right now, but I will get them to you before regularly. The second item I have is consented to item number ten, the request for the Muslaj to be opened on Sunday, May fifteenth. I just want to find out that this request came in while I was out, so I'm asking the council to approve this as permality, so that we have a document that we authorize that. Next, I have been asked to schedule a meeting of the Cable T V Commission, and since the council is currently serving as that commission, I'm wondering if you want to schedule a time during your next regular meeting, or if we can just talk about that, just something I wanted to make you aware of. Jose is looking for some direction on a few things related to the cable TV. Next, I wanted to mention that this morning, we sent off the application for Brewer Op Sale License for Castle Danger Brewing to the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Alcohol and Yabbling Enforcement. As you may be aware, Castle Danger Brewing has been working with legislators to allow growler sales for those breweries who sell in excess of twenty thousand barrels each year. They were able to get the growler law passed this week, which is now, which now allows growler sales for brewers selling less than a hundred and fifty thousand barrels annually. So we're excited for them to be able to bring back the sale of growlers once we get their application approved by the state and their license has been issued. The council did authorize this license application a few months ago, anticipating the passage of this law. So that is all I have.
And Patty, real quick, how long do you think it will take now to get this stuff back into the state for Castle Danger Brewing?
Generally, it's a couple of days, as soon as they can review it and send it back to me, although, I mean, I would expect it to be much longer, because there's only a handful of these folks that it's a bad thing to use.
Great, thank you. Finance director updates?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to point out some things on the agenda. Number seventeen, we had a discussion at the Utilities Committee meeting in regards to an amendment to the W S B material testing for the wastewater treatment plant project. And the amendment is to increase that contract by two thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. I didn't know if anybody had any questions regarding that. And then also, new business, we have new business item number two, which is authorizing the application for up to two hundred thousand in L C C M R funding for the waterfront property. And, you know, it kind of came as a surprise. The deadline is May twenty-sixth to get on that funding list. So really, at this point, you know, we do not own that property, you know, we're anticipating to, but this funding could be utilized for planning and future development for that. And so I just thought, you know, this would be an opportunity to have a discussion. I know we haven't had, you know, a committee of the whole waterfront meeting, but if anybody has any questions or wants to discuss that right now.
Go ahead, Jer.
The L C C M R grant, it's my understanding that that's an action grant and not a planning grant, so I'm trying to figure out what we would be applying for, for two hundred thousand dollars, especially considering we have had two planning activities for the waterfront in five and seven years.
Yeah, working with Jeff Anderson, our government relations person, there are several entities that do planning grants. They cap out at two hundred thousand, which is why she, he shared information with Miranda to have this move forward. So I would say that for us, we can make the attempt, and if it is unsuccessful, it is competitive, so there isn't a guarantee, but I support trying to put some dollars together if we can, and as part of his work, he would be helping compile that information with the assistance of the administration, so I do support new business.
No, I mean, just that, I mean, it can be used for planning, from my understanding, you know, and that, you know, we can always pull out of it. I just thought we don't want to lose the opportunity of waiting another cycle, you know, and I'm, so it's completely up to the council, but I just wanted to put it out there, because like I said, the deadline is May twenty-sixth.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Miranda. Did you have anything else?
No, I just, it was nice to see the audit, and it kind of paints a picture for what we're looking at and how we can move forward as we look at the two thousand and twenty-three budget, which already we're going to start working on internally and with the council soon. And, you know, we'd really like to start, you know, you guys thinking about when we can do the priorities meeting and how we want that to look for this year, so we can get an early start on that. So I think it's just a good look to always look at these documents and see where we are and what we feel we can do moving forward, you know, as the, as the city, so. But start thinking about dates, because that'll be a good conversation for everybody to have together.
Patty, did you have something to add?
Not to Miranda's, but just to what I spoke about earlier. I phoned the names of the temporary employees that are there. We just got a couple. One is Austin Jones at the cemetery, and the second one is John Bartell Wagner at the liquor store. We've got a couple other, we've got a natural lot of applicants, but I don't have their background checks back yet on the rest of those, so I think that's going to be part before the council's made. Thank you.
What was the name of the one for the liquor store?
John Bartell Wagner.
All right. Community Development Planner updates?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight, I have two things on the agenda. Number six, the third and final reading for the short-term rental ordinance amendment, and then number seven regarding food trucks. I get a lot of calls for people asking if they can do food trucks on city property, and right now, they're allowed in the V one, the V two, and the mixed-use waterfront. I tend to tell people that they cannot go on city property unless they have council permission, because that is what we do. And I think Council Blazer did that vendor market permit that came, you guys started that in two thousand and eighteen? Is that when that started? Somewhere around there?
Somewhere around there.
Yeah, and so they've become more popular, and so we're getting more questions about it. And so I thought, instead of having a ton of people come forth all the time asking to be on city property and having to coordinate, worrying about if we already have something scheduled there or whatever, I thought maybe the council could just, for this one summer, try to authorize, anybody who has a food truck or a vendor market permit with the city can go on Fridays from ten A M. to six P M. behind the Legion. And then we know they're only there on Fridays. It gives people a lot of, most of the private properties that people can go on right now are taken up, so I just thought that's a good way to kind of corral everybody. We don't have to take, we don't have to block it off or anything. Gives people a place to go, and then alleviates getting a million calls about, can I go on city property and coordinating who's going to be where. So I would ask that you approve that. And then this little handout here, this is just kind of, whenever the newsletter comes out, I have way too much to fit into the newsletter, and so this kind of just gives you guys an update of some things that are going on. It gives the communities some information in here about the Highway sixty-one project. These are calls that I get every single day about code, the housing study, about what the commissions are up to, what programs are available to help improve properties, the Emerald Ash War information is in there, so. The Emerald Ashmore information is in there, some things about short-term rentals, the land use of building permits, and then the vendor market permits. And then there's just a list of some economic development projects that are going on. And if anybody's wondering what's going on in the building across from Castle Danger, that is going to be called Medea. It's gonna be a sandwich, beestrel, and a full bar, and it's going to open up in the next month or two. Does anyone have any questions for me?
On the food truck Friday, is it, is it a first come, first served? So there could be one, two, three, four people that, if they wanted to come?
I would just assume everybody goes. We have probably seven vendor market permits in town, food trucks, and I just assumed anybody who's licensed with the city, if you want to go down there on Fridays between those times, you can go down. I thought it's a good way to get some foot traffic downtown and everybody's in one spot. And the only, the only exception that I would have is Heritage Days weekend because we don't allow anybody to do anything outside of the Heritage Days area and they have to work with that committee. So that would be the only exempt time.
Thank you.
So that would just be for all of the food trucks or vendors that have a vendor market permit that are already pre-authorized by the city?
Yeah.
Corrected and inscribed?
Yep, or if they get one over the summer, then they can go there too.
Jennifer, I just want to know how they're gonna handle that particular Friday during the tall ships? I have a big question, big votes.
Well, I think we talked about this a little bit. We haven't had a lengthy discussion on the vendors, but because it's not a city-sponsored event, they can, people can still go down there if they want.
Okay, that's.
So the only thing that we exempt is Heritage Days weekend because that is a city-sponsored. But for tall ships, I mean, I guess we would talk about it with maybe the police chief and see what he thinks about it. But otherwise, since it's not a city event specifically, we, people can go wherever they want for the food trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Thank you.
City engineer updates?
No, Joel is, yeah, he took a night off. No, I mean, good for Joel.
I just, I opted just to kind of fill in for him and Miranda already touched on the consent agenda, consent agenda item number seventeen, and so I'm here for any questions related to that. Otherwise, if you have any additional updates.
Perfect. Any questions? Anything for me?
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, yes.
Go ahead.
In the interest of time for the six o'clock meeting of the whole, I was wondering if we could move new business one and two to forward the committee reports or move the committee reports a bit. I do have an engagement at seven o'clock and I want to be here for that.
I will entertain removing the, or moving the committee reports to after the consent agenda, or after new business. Is that what you're looking for?
I think, I think we can get it.
Okay. So we're gonna do a consent, correct? And then maybe we'll be first.
I just, do we think that there's any committees or courts that can, any of the consent agenda items, we can start with them now before we close this meeting? In the, in the lineup that is in progress? I don't have any, personally have any questions on consent agenda, but if anyone else did or if there was someone from a committee that wanted to share something, I just want to make sure we don't go out of sync or, but I, I can support everyone.
Does anybody have anything that's in the top hook for that? Or is the occasion that we?
I, I'm fine as long as the council doesn't have any questions with regards to the personnel items that are on the agenda. And that would be items thirteen and fourteen.
I just had a question there, and so Joel will be staying with us through February? Just in, if we hire anyone to kind of try to roll.
Yep, his, his contract is basically open. He will be continuing to participate, take the month of September off. He had already scheduled plans and we were okay with that. Then he'll come back and we will start the administrative search process in November after the general election. And I, I'll give you more updates at, at many meetings, but I just want to make sure everybody is clear that he will be staying with us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. My only question is, I noticed that we're saying that it's gonna be thirteen, November posting, but then we're gonna say that we're trying to have a contract for February. Does that seem like a little short time or months for the process?
Yes, go ahead.
When we had our first discussion with regards to finding an interim city administrator, our goal was to start, we started actually, the second meeting, we had two meetings in April, and we had a pretty tight timeline. The goal was to have somebody hired by the end of July. So I don't see why we can't continue with that. We'll have more time now to get the brochure and the advertising, square way, review of the administrator's position and get a, a firm package put together so that when we advertise, we're kind of ready to go. But the goal was, at this point, was we would be doing the interviews, we'd be, last weekend in July and hiring and having somebody start by September first was the original plan.
Yeah, I have no issue with that. I just know four months goes by really, really fast. So I was like, if it, if I could just start October, who's through, when the administrator comes off, that's not a problem.
Our goal was to wait till after the general election.
Thank you. Any other questions? So currently I have it as moving committee reports to right after new business. Are there any other additions or questions or changes to the agenda?
I'm sorry, I do have one addition and it is on your packet. This was a previously approved, it's a lease for the golf equipment that we approved on January in two thousand twenty-two. However, Huntington Bank is the one that is doing the lease, so they have a formal resolution for the council to pass for that all to go through. So we wanted to pass that contingent upon the city attorney, you know, making sure everything was okay. But like I said, it was previously approved, it's just the formal documents for that lease.
And you'd like to move that to consent agenda twenty-two?
Yes, please. Do, does anybody have any questions or concerns about it?
Okay. Any other agenda questions or additions? Joel, did you want to try to speak again? You're good.
Don't give you a place.
Your, your audio is all messed up, Joel. You sound like, uh, the oven of the chipmunks. I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion adjourned.